Test, test. Can someone confirm they can hear me? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. The Durham Public School Board of Education work session is now in session. At this time, we wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone who is joining us this evening. The purpose of this meeting is to inform our parents, staff, and constituents about the work aligned with our mission to embrace, educate, and empower every student to innovate, serve, and lead. The interpreter for tonight is Martha Romo Erguillas and Marti Ramirez. Thank you for joining us. The first item on the agenda is a moment of silence. Take one moment, please. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the agenda review and approval.
Move approval of the agenda? Do you have an addition there?
I do.
Yeah, sorry, let me just back that up. I do not move that.
The administration has prepared a couple of slides about COVID protocols and after school. So I would love if we could include that. Maybe right, the Board of Education 7B?
Are there any other? Are there any other amendments to the agenda? Entertain a motion?
Move approval of the agenda as amended?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Ms. Byer and seconded by Ms. Umstead, and is there any discussion? We also have Board Member Matt Sears joining us virtually, so we will need to do a voice vote. Ms. Rogers? Ms. Vaya Deras?
Aye.
Ms. Byer?
Aye.
Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
Ms. Umstead?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
This is Matt Sears, I vote aye.
I also vote aye. The boardwork session as amended has been passed. The next on the agenda is the general public comment. I'm sorry, boardwork session minutes from June 9th, 2022.
Move approval of the minutes?
You second?
Been moved by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Vaya Deras, is there any discussion? I will move to vote. Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Vaya Deras?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
Ms. Umstead?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
This is Matt Sears, I vote aye.
And I also vote aye, passed unanimously. And the next item on our agenda is now the public comments. So a quick review of the rules first, please state your name. If speaking for an organization, please state your name and the name of the organization. Second speakers are asked to present their comments in a specified time, usually three minutes. When the like, yellow light comes on, you will have one minute to start winding up your remarks. When the red light comes on, it will beep, which indicates your time to, your time is up. Complaints about named staff, students, or parents should not be voiced in open session. However, we are interested in hearing your concerns with regard to public education, safety of students, or to the operation of the school system. Finally, the board members will listen carefully and consider the comments, but we do not engage in discussion with speakers. Our first speaker for tonight is Kevin Premus.
Dr. Mubenga, Board Chair, members of the board, thank you for allowing public comments. Thank you again for all the work you're doing. I'm asking for some additional consideration about the MOU with the Durham Sheriff's Department and DPS. I've been a DPS parent for the past 14 years. I've been on the school improvement team at Riverside High School for several of the past years since 2015. And Dr. Mubenga was kind enough to follow up on a situation that we had. I won't name any names about a particular deputy who had a reputation that had gotten into the newspaper in the early 2000s for some incidents that had happened. And according to the MOU, that no, no deputy who has that kind of background should be put in this, this position. And so I took the time this morning when I saw it was on the agenda to go through the entire MOU and highlighted and underlined, it had a lot of questions, and I'm going to follow up with an email. Because I think in general, I just want to share some of the themes so that you know what, what we're trying to engage with. And then also, you know, send those specific questions in the email. But there are basically four themes. What are the accountability mechanisms in place to verify that the SROs have the required minimum training? Do we have documentation that this person was hired here and they were trained at a certain time? We'd love to see that. What is the, the nature of the training? You know, they say that it's, it's 40 hours, but we'd love to know what that training is, especially since we've had so many incidents since 2019, and this was originally drafted. Uvalde, you know, just being one of them as citizens, we'd like to know how they're being trained for these situations. Three, how are the sheriff's office and DPS holding themselves accountable to parents, students, and staff for the, the provisions in this MOU? In other words, is their reporting back to school improvement teams, right? Because at Riverside, they might do things different than, than Jordan. And we just want to know that when we get a substitute SRO, you know, how, how are they going to respond in these different situations? How are they treating kids fairly? And then finally, how can concerned parents and staff participate in the training? And the summits and the content and the fidelity of this document going forward? We'd love to not just learn about it and then have to deal with the document, but be participants in the process. And I've talked with many community leaders who are of a similar mind, let them speak for themselves and email themselves. So thank you for your time, and I will follow this up with an email. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other public comments that signed up, just wanted to check. All right, the next item on our agenda is the consent items.
Yeah, I wanted to add one thing to the consent items. The Edmentum contract, which is for Study Island, will include all of our DPS schools. And the materials it does, the materials posted do not include five schools, so we want to make that revision. The amount remains the same for all of those DPS schools. And the recommendation from staff is to approve the contract contingent on attorney negotiations of several provisions in the standard Edmentum contract. We do want to move forward with this so that students and staff will have access to it at the beginning of the school year. And it has happened before that we continue to negotiate contracts as the school year begins. I want to add that, that language in for the motion on this one.
Any other comments about the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Move approval of the consent agenda with the language as amended presented by Ms. Umstead.
I think that works, looking at, at Ron. I'll second that.
It's been moved by Ms. Byer and seconded by Ms. Umstead. Is there any discussion? I did want to say one thing, although you see capturing kids' heart, there is our cultural framework that's being used. And when we get the consent items, we do have conversations with the staff about what's happening. We talk about the outcomes and the impact from the works that we're seeing here. So just know that our staff is working really hard. A lot of our educators and schools want to continue capturing kids' heart. And we'll continue to monitor to make sure we're having direct outcomes from the works that's happening with this framework. So I just wanted to add that we do review these items ahead of time. Any other discussion? We'll take a voice vote. Ms. Rogers? Ms. Vaya Deras?
Aye.
Ms. Byer?
Aye.
Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
Ms. Umstead?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
This is, this is Matt Sears, I vote aye.
I also vote aye, it passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Board of Education, item 7A, DPS Safety and Wellness Task Force Educator Vacancy. I will begin the discussion here. This, um, this is a, I don't, this is a task force that has come together by the city, county, and the Board of Education to have community members to discuss what safety and wellness looks like in our community inclusive of our schools. So as you all know, board members, we've had 18 months. This task force has been working together for 18 months, and we have a certain number of seats. One of the seats is for an educator, and that seat has been vacant. So we have submitted, had talked about it in a previous board meeting, opened up the application process, and we have three applications that came through. What we need to do is vote to have that seat filled. And what I'd like to do is just reading the names, we have Alejandra Gomez, Christopher Nerwood, and Anthony Rouse. And as we all have prepared for this meeting and looked through these applications, what I would like to do is see if we could nominate someone, and then we will do a vote to see if that person will be the person we'd like to choose. Ms. Rogers?
I'd like to nominate Alejandra Gomez.
I don't think nominations need a second, but we can ask if there's any more time for nominations on the floor? And if not, well, then we'll vote.
Is there, are there any other nominations? All right, so for Ms. Gomez, I will do a voice vote to see.
If we have a moment of discussion, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to express appreciation for the folks that are willing to serve. This is an important role in our community and bringing together city and county leaders to work with school folks on these really critical issues. Some of the feedback we're waiting for on the MOU will come from the Durham Community Safety and Wellness Task Force. And so we look forward to that group continuing to, to really bring a Durham voice. But I just wanted to express just deep appreciation for everyone that was willing to serve. And I hope that, you know, one of the pieces that I think is so important is to hear from our comprehensive high school principals. And I think Ms. Lewis, when you and I talked earlier, that was, I want to make sure that if the task force needs anything, both from the, from our safety and security office, but also from our comprehensive high school principals, because that is, is a really difficult job we ask them to do and has a big impact on our work with, with SROs in our schools and how we proceed with that. So just mostly just appreciation for these folks. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Vaya Deras.
Thank you so much, Chair Lewis. I want to thank the service of Dr. Tanya Leathers, who was in this seat, who served us in the Safety and Wellness Task Force as an educator and as a principal of Riverside High School. So it's, it's definitely just a lot of gratitude for her service in that role. And also really, really excited. I will say that one of the factors that really was very important to me is that this person lived in Durham. I looked at, I Googled every address, even when they didn't include the city and the state. You know what I mean? It's like, I Googled the address and I looked at it and I was like, Alejandra, we are so excited to have you onboard. You live in Durham, and you know, that, that's one of the things that is very important, I think, for this work, because we don't exist outside of community. And so, I'm so happy to have that intersection of educator and community member and somebody who has also worked at Duke and has developed, has done a lot of development. So we're really excited to see what Ms. Gomez brings to the table in this role.
And just to share with you all also, just I've served as the liaison for this task force. And it has been incredibly hard work and true commitment. So thank you, I echo Ms. Byer's sentiments of appreciation for all those who have served, all those who are willing to serve. They've had their first year ending in June, and they'll go through December. And the SRO table is ending. They had roundtable discussions, and they're compiling their reports and recommendations that will help to inform the MOU and safety for our kids. But they're beginning a youth initiative roundtable. So also those interested in doing more work and listening sessions as well, the educator who will come on will be getting, you know, fresh eyes, fresh experience, fresh energy to this group to inform the youth initiative roundtable that's happening. Because they're all our youth in the school, in the community. So I'm looking forward to the work coming out of this group, such as deep appreciations again. Thank you. Ms. Chavez?
I wanted to say thank you to those who applied as well. And what made me excited about Alejandra's candidacy for this task force is her focus on restorative justice, which is one of our models that we've been talking about moving towards. So I think that'll be great that she brings that and as a middle school teacher at Brogdon.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion points? Ms. Umstead?
No, I echo the appreciation for all the folks who are currently serving and for Ms. Gomez who will serve. And for you, Ms. Lewis, for being our liaison also on the task force. So I appreciate that as well.
I'll do a voice vote. Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Byadettas?
Aye.
Ms. Byer?
Aye.
Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
Ms. Umstead?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
This is Matt Sears. I vote aye.
I also vote aye. It passes unanimously. Welcome, Alejandra Gomez. The next item on the agenda is our 7B COVID protocols. We will hear from the administration. Dr. Mabenga or Dr. Hardy?
Good afternoon, board members and Dr. Mabenga. On behalf of our Chief of Schools, Dr. Stacy Stewart, I would like to, we can pull up the presentation. And we are going to begin with our updates for back to school. I would like to introduce our Senior Executive Director for Federal Programs and Community Engagement, Dr. Danner, and our Director of Community Education, Ms. Tracy Super Edwards, if they can come to the podium. Thank you to our technology team for pulling up our presentation, Dr. Danner and Ms. Super Edwards.
Good afternoon, Dr. Mabenga and Board Education Members. Today, I will share with you a brief after-school update. Okay, sorry about that. Good afternoon, Dr. Mabenga and Board Education Members. Today, I will share with you a brief after-school update as we continue to accommodate students in our program. Next slide. Next slide, please. Our after-school recruitment effort highlights include hosting partnership meetings with other Durham County after-school providers participating in the North Carolina Works Job Fair, increasing the frequency of the Recruitment Retention Bonus Payout Schedule, October, February, and June, and recruiting at local colleges and universities. We will host a back-to-school luncheon to launch the Community Education Ambassador Referral Program on August 24th for Durham Public Schools' after-school employees. Many of these recruitment efforts are a result of the after-school Community Thought Partner Town Hall Meeting, which was held on July 25, 2022. Next slide, please. After-school Positions Update. To ensure that we have full-time dedicated staff in our after-school programs, the newly created after-school instructional assistant positions will support schools with accelerated learning during the day and after-school. To date, we have received 20 applications. Interviews are underway, and one person has been hired and assigned to Lyons Farm Elementary School. We anticipate interviewing more applicants next week. There is great interest from our school-based instructional assistants in working in the after-school program on extra duty. 68 instructional assistants have expressed interest in working in the program. For the instructional assistants to work in our programs, they must have a qualifying letter issued by the North Carolina Division of Child Development and Early Education in order for them to begin working. Potential employees must register and complete the Criminal Background Check application at the state's website and then be fingerprinted at a sheriff's office within seven days of completing the application. To date, 12 instructional assistants have received the required North Carolina license and qualifying letter. Eight have been assigned to a program, and we will continue assigning qualifying IAs in the program. Next slide, please. Prioritize after-school instructional positions to accommodate waitlists above 30. We are accommodating students off the waitlist. However, as we are moving students off the waitlist, families continue to call daily to register for the program. Therefore, our waitlist numbers continue to fluctuate. As we have partnered with principals in our highly prioritized waitlist at schools, we are optimistic that we will employ 28 after-school instructional assistant positions to accommodate 575 students off the waitlist. Additionally, we have also shared with families information about other Durham after-school care providers as well as the DPS Transportation Services to Durham County After-School Care Providers has been located in the school boundary on the DPS website. Are there any questions?
Okay, yes.
This is great progress, and I'm so thankful that our IAs are willing to come, step up, and help us out and that we do have funding to make that happen this year. Can you explain, does everyone need that qualifying letter? Sorry.
Yes.
So on the graph you showed, you didn't talk about it on the top half of the table, right? But anybody that applies needs that and that background check and that.
In order to work in the program, everyone must have the qualifying letter. That's the state requirement.
And is there a way we can expedite that in any way for folks?
There, no, there is a two- to three-week window in order to get that letter back. We have worked, we are current, we work with the sheriff department to have days identified for DPS employees to come down. They've blocked off some days and some times so that staff can come down to readily have, be able to have access to get fingerprinted. So that speeds up the process for us. But in terms of getting the letter back, that's something that is handled in Raleigh at the state level.
I'm just thinking of these SROs that we pay and what they might be doing, like, could we send them to some places and get some more fingerprints? It's just, yeah, y'all are making great progress. I know folks are just anxious to get updates and people locked in. So, yeah.
The letter part is what comes back from the state. But in terms of getting the fingerprint, we are working on our end with the sheriff department, have a collaboration. And so that part of the process has been worked out. It's just receiving the actual qualifying letter from the state that we have to have as part of our license that that's something that's issued from the state.
Have you ever had one of those turned down? Like, can you lock them in and plan and place them? I mean, tentatively, offers of employment in that way?
No, they have to have the qualifying letter before they begin. It's a license and requirement.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Byadettas?
I'll just follow that with, just, you know, I have that letter, right? And I've been approved, and I had to wait my moment, but I do know that, you know, this letter comes from the state. And if a person lived outside of the state, that will throw it off even further than three weeks. So they have to do a background check in every place they've lived for the last five years. And if at any point they've moved anywhere else, worked anywhere else, I mean, and so that's why it's so important, I think, when it comes to instructional assistants. They're already in-house. Our instructional assistants already work for us. And the fact that, you know, this is an opening where we have invited them to come and get extra duty pay or whatever we need to do to actually leverage folks that we have who are willing to do that, I think that is our best bet. Just because this process does take time. And, you know, we will get the reinforcements when folks come in, but that letter is a factor that we don't control. And it does speak of, you know, what are the qualifications? You need to have that background with the Division of Child, the division that approves folks to work with children. So thank you so much.
We have a comment question from Mr. Sears.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis and Administration. I'll be brief. Thank you so much for the hard work on this. It is much appreciated. Please keep it up. Those families that are just calling now, they deserve our full attention and hard work and dedication, just like folks that applied the day it opened. So, but did want to call out, great job, and thank you, and please keep it up.
Ms. Rogers and then Ms. Umstead?
Yes, thank you so much for this update and for doing this work. I have two questions. My first question is that the first slide or one of the slides shows that there were 65 or 68 educators who had expressed interest. Are we actively following up with those folks to find out what has them slowed to actually do the application process?
Yes, we are following up with them. We send them the affirmation, giving them the qualifications, and we are staying in touch with them to see where they are in the process, when they have been scheduled to go to get fingerprinted and when they have their date and when they expect to get their letter. So yes, we are staying in touch with them to see where they think they're going to be receiving the letter.
And my second question is really just a process question in regards to the waitlist and siblings. Do they have to take their spot, or do they remain on the waitlist if one sibling gets in and the other one doesn't? How is that working?
That is up to the family. If they want to, we have some families that choose to wait and remain on the waitlist. If only one child gets into the program, depends on the grade, and then it's a family choice. So we have some families that they put one child in and one child, it's up to the family.
Ms. Umstead?
Thank you all so much for all the hard work that you've done on this. I think a lot of folks have expressed gratitude around the town halls and community meetings. I think Durham's at its best when we're working together to find solutions to our challenges. I think one question I have, and I think this is actually for Dr. Mabenga. I know when we first originally talked about instructional assistance, working in after-school program funding was a question. And so I want to just hear a little bit from you and your team about how we were able to manage that with the funding piece.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the question. I think Ms. Byer also pretty much mentioned that. This is just one time. I have Dr. Danner here, our CFO, they can tell you how much we're able to receive from the grants. Our instructional assistant, now they're working 100%, right? So anytime they have to work on those programs, it's going to be overtime. Can you imagine if somebody's making $16 an hour, overtime is pretty much about 24. So we cannot sustain it as an organization paying overtime. But likely for us for this year, we got a grant that we should be able to pay all our assistant teachers overtime throughout this year. So hopefully with that, we should be able to stabilize the situation moving forward for the following year. I think we're going to be in a different place. So I think Dr. Danner or Paul is sure they don't need to give the extra amount, but we are financially stable to be able to take care of that. Thank you for the question.
I appreciate that. I have two things to consider for the next year. I think one of, just a little frustration I had is that our town hall felt a little late. I think we knew that changing these start times, when we approved them, was going to create this bottleneck. And so I want us to be proactive, and I already think about next year. A lot of these same families will need after-school care again because of the change in start times. And so just wanted us to go ahead and proactively think about how are we going to staff and provide support for schools and after-school programs in the next year? So just a word for us to consider, that's going to come up again next year.
I think at the same time, we are also relying on our students from NCCU, Duke, and other places that we can be able to employ. And I think with that particular strategy, we'll be able to try to be proactive moving forward for the following year.
I will just say, it is great work. So I really appreciate you all working hard. We know how much a challenging labor market it is and how much families really need that childcare, right? And so people are really eager to figure out what's happening. So I appreciate y'all for coming to some quick solutions.
Chavez?
I don't have any other questions. I just wanted to thank you for everything that you've done to accelerate this process. I think it's remarkable.
And I just want to say also, I echo sentiments of appreciation for the turnaround that's happening. And thank you for the update, the town hall, listening to the considerations that everyone shared at those town halls. I do have a question about one of the procedures is having fingerprints. Is that something that we're able to take care of immediately or reimburse, or do they have to get on their own?
Currently, right now, they have to get, they're getting the fingerprinting on their own. It's a requirement for employees to get fingerprinted. Yeah, it's about 30, the combination, I think, is about between $36 and $38. I have the two-step process.
Could we look into see if we could take care of that funding for them?
We can look into that.
Thank you. Any other comments? You want to go to your next part of your slide? Who was next? Dr. Hardy?
Thank you. If we can pull up the presentation, we do have one more slide. In collaboration with our lead nurse, Nurse Tricia Howard, and our COVID manager, DeLois Prince, and other staff, we have shared, but with our principals, some updates regarding COVID-19. If you'll go to the next slide, the North Carolina. Perfect. The North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has provided information and guidance to our school districts. At this time, we are not operating under a strong schools toolkit as we have operated in the previous couple of years. However, we are expected to follow our CDC guidelines. Durham Public Schools does also work in collaboration with the Durham Health Department. When an individual tests positive for COVID-19, they must stay at home and isolate for five days. The date of the positive test collection or the date of the symptoms begins that day zero. The supervisor, principal, or designee is required to continue to complete our DPS questionnaire that allows us to have the awareness necessary of staff and/or students who may have tested positive. An individual still has a fever on the fifth day or their symptoms are not improving, they cannot end isolation. They should only do so when they have been fever-free and are improving symptoms for at least 24 hours. Individuals may return to school or to work on day six if they still have symptoms as long as they are improving and the individual has been fever-free. Individuals must wear a mask 100% of the time around others for an additional five days after coming out of isolation. Durham Public Schools will continue our partnership with Mako and provide diagnostic testing. Information for families, if they wish to register, their youngster has been shared with schools and will be shared with our traditional schools during our back-to-school events such as open house. Also on this slide, we have provided links and information, if you can see on the bottom right-hand corner, regarding monkeypox from our CDC as well as from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and our Durham Health Department. This time, we're more than happy, or I'm more than happy, I do have Ms. Howard watching to take any questions that you may have about these updates.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you so much for these updates. This is really helpful. I'm really appreciative that we're moving forward with the testing with Mako. Is that right? Okay. I just really want to ask that we push that out a little ahead of the open houses, maybe add it to the checklist that's on the website. Open house can be overwhelming for a lot of parents, and that's just one more thing to add to the list. But thank you.
Ms. Byer?
So thank you for bringing some COVID back to the agenda. It's been a while. We keep thinking we're going to be done with this. And there was new CDC guidance today, which I'm sure that Nurse Howard is going to go through and see if there's other things that change in that. CDC is still recommending indoor masking during times of high community transmission. And I wonder if we would consider, and y'all talk as a group, and, you know, I don't decide these things, but indicating on our website just what the community transmission level in Durham is. I just looked it up. We're still in high, right? And just so families know, when they go, that kind of as a color-coded indicator of their choices to whether to, you know, encourage students to mask or not as. that kind of as a color-coded indicator of their choices to whether to, you know, encourage students to mask or not as they're riding on buses, which are very enclosed spaces still. And then ventilation, Dr. Monk, was really, really important in these latest guidelines that came out this afternoon. I wondered if sometime in the future, you might bring us just an update on where we are with some of that work. I think that would be helpful for our families. Have we talked to the Health Department also about sending home test kits rather than just doing the Mako testing? Have y'all talked through that as a strategy because there's so much more available? And do they have capacity to have us have, you know, a quantity at each school that can be sent home with families as needed, any family that requested?
We can add that to our next. We have weekly calls with our Health Department, so we can add that to our next weekly call. Thank you.
And do we have any updates on local pediatric vaccination rates in our five to eighteen-year-olds? Do we have? In those calls, I'm sure that comes up some, but I would love just us to be transparent about that and to continue to encourage folks to booster up before coming back. Because I think this guidance really relies, it backs away from collective public health measures and really relies on individuals and families keeping sick children home. And so we're in a different face, a phase. Yeah. But thank you all for this update.
And we have disseminated some kits from our Health Department as well as kits that have been delivered here. But that is something, I know they do have additional kits that are available, so we'll make sure that that is on our next agenda. We meet with them on Mondays. Thank you.
Ms. Byer, that is, and then Ms. Umstead.
Thank you, Chair Lewis. I just wanted to mention that there are still some vaccination efforts and, you know, testing that continues to be available at eight oh six Clarendon and so many other sites. And also the monkey, you mentioned monkeypox. I'm so grateful that we included this. Duke Health had had a pop-up monkeypox vaccine. They did that yesterday. Oh, no, sorry, it's today. Is this, this was sold yesterday. And so it's, right now, it's only available for eighteen and over. But the thing is that there are already efforts for monkeypox vaccine pop-up clinics. And I just think that we will continue to share, I want us to continue to share resources on our website. This is currently not available to anyone eighteen and younger. However, you know, as with, as the same thing happened with the COVID vaccine, you know, it starts with the older population and starts going into the younger population. So just something to be looking out for. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make these comments. I think I spoke with our Health Director a couple of days ago. That's something that we need to be having a conversation with them to be able to update their website. I think on our end, we pretty much just need to be sharing that link, sending it back to them. So I know as busy as we can be hiring and doing other things, we don't want to be doing the Health Department work. So just in a good way. So we'll be sharing the link. But I think we need to be having a conversation with them to make those transparent and update them as much as possible. Once we send our families there and our staff, they will be able to get accurate information.
I appreciate y'all for putting this update together. And funny, we haven't talked about COVID in a while. On the day we do, there's a new update from the CDC. So it's still continuing to evolve and change, but we are very much in a different place. I know that we are mask-recommended and we want to encourage families to get vaccinated. I just wonder, as we're doing our back-to-school messaging, if we can include that as a part of that messaging, right? You know, getting your school supplies, get updated on your vaccines. If you need a mask, bring a mask. I also want to know if we were still providing masks if students wanted in in schools as well as our COVID dashboard that we had on our website. I know now with the, with the way testing is reported, it'd be hard to manage those cases or to still report those cases the way reporting is. But I just want to know if we would be housing any DPS COVID data.
And Dr. Monk can speak to PPE as well. We have maintained our PPE managers for central service sites as well as our school locations. We have reminded them of how to access if they need PPE and that PPE is readily available for both students and staff as we remain, per the board's direction, in a mask-recommended status. And then in terms of the data, it is very difficult, given how the data is coming in for us to have the dashboard. However, we have maintained our COVID-19 manager as well as our lead nurse. And we are monitoring those forms as they come in so that we can see there are any trends or any cases. And that is why we have that collaboration with the Health Department. So that does allow us, if there is something that would need additional attention for us to work closely with the Health Department and/or a classroom or a school.
Just thank you all for staying up to date on this as it continues to evolve and change. And I just want to also echo the comments around sending folks to the Health Department will have the most up-to-date information when it comes to monkeypox. I know there are people out there who are interested in more information, but we only have what the Health Department has given us and what the CDC says. So I think that's an important strategy. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I also want to appreciate you for bringing this to us, the updates and what the recommendations are, the guidelines that we are following that are changing as we speak. Speaking of PPE, I'm glad that our administrators, staff, educators still have access to it, know how to get it, and our students as well. With the students who may test positive or have symptoms of COVID and then test positive in the five-day count, when they return to school for five days and have to mask for five days since we're mask-recommended, is there a process that the parents need to go through to make sure that the personnel educators in the building know that that child should have their mask on for the five days?
So we rely on our supervisors as well as our principals to make sure that they are monitoring that. So for example, if there was an employee that had reported to me that they were positive and I completed the form, I'm checking on that employee while they're out, when they return, making sure that I'm monitoring that employee to make sure that they have the appropriate PPE. One, if I need to acquire some from Mr. France and to make sure that they're wearing that PPE. The same is the case for our youngsters that are in the classroom, that teachers are making sure if there's a student when they return that they have a mask that they can wear and they are wearing it regularly during those five days. And also monitoring their symptoms. And that's where the collaboration with our school nurses, the department health nurse and COVID extenders that we have to make sure that we're monitoring symptoms because students are to return after being fever-free for twenty-four hours and staff as well.
So a child could be out, student could be out for five days, Monday through Friday, miss a whole week of school and their parent or caregiver should have made the school aware that that was the reason that they're out. How are we handling absences and makeup assignments in that situation? I know we handled it before, but it is a little different. I know that some, a lot of people struggle, a lot of students struggle when they were out to get caught back up.
So two things. The first thing that is important is that within the first few days of beginning school, we are making sure that all of our students have access to their Chromebooks. So distribution of Chromebook as well as making sure that they have access to our electronic resources, which means I do have access to Canvas as well as hopefully we've approved Study Island and the previous contracts that the board has approved before gives them access to those electronic resources that they can use when they are out. It is our expectation that we, that our classroom teachers ensure if they have missed assignments, that they have appropriate makeup time for those assignments. And while they're out, if they are well enough, because we do want to acknowledge when students are sick, they may not be well enough to complete any assignments or complete things that may be on Canvas, that they have the appropriate time that they need when they return. But those materials are available. And that's part of the reason that form is also important and checking with the data manager and the teacher. So if Nikia is out, then making sure that teacher is following up with the family to see, is Nikia out for a different reason or is she out because she's ill? And also acknowledging that our families are working with our pediatrician. So students may be out because of a COVID positive test, but they could be out for other reasons as well. And making sure that we're acknowledging what that is and providing the support that we need to, to that particular family or caregiver.
Thank you. And then one last question for me. It wasn't until I had my children at a pediatrician this past summer for a checkup or appointment that I learned that boosters were available for children. So much information, so much overload when boosters are available. Can we also make that a part of the messaging to check to see if your child is ready for a booster? If you want to get vaccinated, if not, get your child vaccinated. And a second, for those who have been vaccinated, boosters are available as well.
We will definitely continue that messaging. We have shared with our principals, there has been some information from the state so that schools as well as school districts can request messaging regarding vaccination and access to vaccination. So as a district, we have requested that and we have shared information with our principals for schools to request that. So hopefully we will be receiving those materials and those will be posted in addition to communication that we can have at open houses.
Thank you. And some of my children are already in school and they have been doing a great job with the messaging and knowing what's happening. But just as we get ready for our traditional school calendar as well. Ms. Chavez, Ms. Rogers, and then Ms. Byer.
Thank you for this update. This feels like the move into where we live with COVID for a long time. And so I do appreciate the updates and the, you know, the re-education that we all need. I was wondering, within the PPE that we're providing, has there been any move to provide N95s or KN95s for kids? I know those, there's a cost with that, but I think especially over the last several months, there's been such an emphasis on those types of masks as safer in preventing the spread of COVID-19.
Good afternoon. And we do provide KN95 to all of our students and they have the choice between that or the surgical mask they choose.
So my question is back on the absences because I know that there are some schools, elementary schools that departmentalized, but then we'll get into middle and high school. We have multiple courses that students are visiting, multiple, you know, multiple teachers a day. So are the absences truly coded as a COVID absence? And so all educators that they encounter are alerted to that? And are we encouraging families to let us know when their student has tested positive for COVID?
I'll start with the last question first. And so absolutely, we are continuing to encourage families to let us know and working with our families in terms of how they have acknowledged that a youngster as well as a staff member has tested positive. We do encourage access to PCR tests, but we know there's so much access to home tests, which were not available before. So just making sure there's clarity regarding how you are acknowledging that positive test and that you are notifying us because we, because it is a communicable disease, we have to also make sure that we're communicating that to the Health Department. And that form is our process to ensure that we get that information from our employees. And our supervisors have done a very good job of completing that form. And then our principals and/or their designee, if there is a student or a staff member. At the elementary level, we have daily attendance. And so to your point, that beginning homeroom teacher is taking attendance and it does count for the entire day. And once we are notified and/or when the child returns, we would like to be notified prior or during. But when the child returns, of course, the parent or guardian can write a note. The data manager does capture that and can make adjustments to that particular absence. At the high school level, we do period attendance. And that period attendance can also be modified if necessary when a child has missed all of the periods for that particular day, which then means they're absent for the entire day, which would be the case for the five isolation period days.
Dr. Hardy, I guess to kind of follow up with that, that question, I do feel like I'm hearing that we're going to do contact tracing in a much different way. I like that families shouldn't expect to hear from us about cases within school. Is that true? Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
Absolutely. There is no, we are, at this point, we are not contact tracing at all. And so we are not reporting out to families in the manner that we did over the previous two years. You may have remembered families had received phone calls as well as emails that went out to families. We are monitoring cases. And if there is a place where we see a, in a particular classroom, a particular school, a particular office, something that would deem more extensive acknowledgement either from the Health Department or acknowledged by our lead nurse, then we would proceed at that time following guidelines. And that is why that form is so important. We do want to encourage, just as many of the board members has mentioned and in our documents for families to be aware so that they are aware that right now we are mask-recommended and that we are providing PPE, that there are vaccinations available and making sure that they are aware within our community to access, access those if they so choose for themselves and/or for their children.
I appreciate it. That's super helpful. I think we did extra on contact tracing and Nurse Howard and Ms. Prince like led that longer than most districts did. And so I know that our families have appreciated that communication, but I think that is a huge, a big shift for this year. And the other question would be whether that's leave for employees, the test positive still exists at the state level? Didn't we have that in the past? Do we still have that funding?
Dr. Lassane, do you want to speak to the contagious leave availability for employees?
And so the state policy for contagious disease leave still applies. But keep in mind that that does require direction by the Health Director. And so we are currently working with the Health Department to make sure that maybe we can make some nuances, some changes to that process that will make it easier for our employees if they have to access that leave.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion, feedback? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is items eight, A, B, and C. I'm starting with eight A, Chief of Staff Insurance Program. Ms. Giovanni?
Thank you, Chair Lewis. Members of the board, Dr. Mabanga, community members and staff. Policy eighty-three forty, insurance that is in the board policy manual provides and mandates that the superintendent or designee report to the board in its first meeting in August, the results of the insurance program renewal. This information is provided every year and it is provided for your information. The numbers, obviously, there has been an increase, which we, I do want to say it is a fourteen percent increase, but based on what the information we received from our broker Durham, even though we, we have really done a good job across the district in being proactive and reducing claims. With that being said, I do want to express a great appreciation to Miranda McDonald. She is the Claims Analyst and all of the work renewing, getting all the renewal paperwork together. She facilitated that, having only come on board in November and did not miss a beat. This is a cross-departmental effort as well. Paul LaSueur, we does a yeoman's share of work gathering all of the financial data. The IT Department does a lot of work, the Transportation Department. I know the rule is you shouldn't name people because you're going to forget somebody. But so if I forget, forgot to name anyone who really helped with this renewal, please forgive me, but I did want to make sure that I mentioned those groups as well. So I did, the last thing I will say for the information is if you look at the cyber percentage, we have a lot of safety measures in place on cyber. I hear the complaints every day that people have to use the multi-factor authentication, but that is necessary for our premiums to be as low as they are. On average this year, our broker told us they were expecting about a sixty percent increase in cyber liability because everyone is one-to-one and just the ransomware. I mean, we've had school districts in North Carolina that have been hit with that ransomware. So we have done a lot of things, put a lot of measures in place to protect our student data, staff data, et cetera. So I'm very proud of the work that we have done and it has enabled us to maintain the lower premium on the cyber liability. Thank you.
Thank you for this update and sharing this information. This is on the Praises for our discussion.
Well, it was just for our information.
Or just for information.
Happy to, happy to, happy to answer questions.
We'd like to discuss it. Ms. Byer has a comment.
Excuse me if I missed this. Did you say what volunteer accident is and it has TBD in the notes? Twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three premium will be released late August. I don't even know. Volun, for when our volunteers come on campus and they have an accident, that's what that piece is.
That is correct.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And it's on, it's been, I believe, maybe twenty-four hundred dollars a year. And it's on, it's been, I believe, maybe $2,400 a year and it hasn't changed.
It is a big bargain. I love that one. Yeah. Okay.
But they, the invoice, I've followed up and the invoice won't be available until August. Well, this is August, late August.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, there's nothing more for this, is eight B, MOU between DPS and Durham County Sheriff Department. Ms. Giovanni.
This item is being provided to the board's pleasure, information or discussion. This MOU that we have had with the sheriff's department, I believe it was maybe 2017 or 2018, has been ministerially renewed every year. It was renewed by the sheriff and the superintendent as it expired on June 30th of this year. And we want to make sure that we have coverage for our schools. We are in the process. I believe one of the board members mentioned earlier that the Safety and Wellness Task Force that the appointee was just appointed to will be providing feedback and information on this MOU from the community. So at this point, we want to make sure that we are honoring those voices and are just kind of in a holding pattern at this point in regards to any adjustments to the MOU. Happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Rogers? Ms. Byer, do we lack a public comment for this item? I didn't have any signed up for the item, but we can, because someone came in later would like to make a public comment. Thanks for checking. Ms. Rogers?
I know this is a touchy subject, but are we renewing the contract just to, because we've always renewed the contract with SROs? Are we actively looking for something different? I know that's what the Safety and Wellness Task Force is going to do. But before that, has DPS been looking for something different to provide support in schools different than SROs?
Thank you, Ms. Rogers, for that question. I think we got to a point where even our board, folks have different positions when it comes to SRO on our campuses. So myself, my staff, and the sheriff, so we're able to craft that MOU to the best of our ability. Just to be able to protect our staff as well as our students. I know there have been some organization, political organization, that they were even able to interview some of our high school principals. And I know what was the result for that interview. So we got to the point where we're just waiting for this task force that is pretty much is going to be comprehensive, a lot of folks in the community, different inputs. And we're waiting for that so we could make adjustments. As Ms. Giovanni said, we could not start our school year-round school in July without having a document in place. That's why I was able to seek, have a conversation with the chair of the board. Go ahead, sign it until we get input from you guys. We are open, whatever the board pleasure is going to be. Once we receive those recommendations, I'm going to be open to follow the pleasure of the board. But at this point, we do not have a choice other than signing the MOU so we can keep our school safe. So whatever other options is going to come from the recommendation from our board, we'll be ready for that recommendation. But for the meantime, we have to secure our schools and make sure that our babies and our stuff are safe.
Well, I think it was in 2018, 2019 that there were some major revisions made to the MOU based on feedback from community and ways that we wanted to see the program grow and change. So it hasn't been stagnant, but I think we wanted to really honor the purpose of the Community and Safety Wellness Task Force to make sure that they're able to do their work and provide recommendations. But I think, you know, there has been some efforts before that task force got started to really think about, how do we, we're, we're having this program, what are the best practices? So that training that's included here with the principals and the school resource officers was something that was added to the MOU based on some of those conversations. And that was, feels like a little while ago now that that happened.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that was, I think, prior to COVID. But I will say this, I don't like to react to public comments. I think I was able to receive really good feedback today, accountability, what's going to that training look like? So those are the things that we are looking for to hold ourselves accountable and make sure, what's that kind of training look like? So, so we're going to take those things back to our conversation as we're meeting with sheriff and to see how we can address some of those issues. But at the same time, we're still waiting for those recommendations that's going to be robust from our task force so that everybody will buy into it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Could you also, when you're going back to have these conversations, one of the things that I highlighted in the MOU was the substitution process. Can we get some clarity around if the substitutes are coming from other schools that have active SROs, like one or two, and they would be moved to another school? Or if the SRO is coming from, you know, like deputy service where they've been serving warrants and evictions and things like that? Can we get some clarity from the sheriff's office around what that substitution looks like for this year?
Yes, we'd be glad to talk to sheriff and be able to provide those. But let me also say this, as we're closing the academic year, last year we had 10 vacancies. Among our SO10. So likely for this year, sheriff was able to recruit in the academy. I think there are probably 10 that went through the training, but we're not going to get all those 10. We're probably going to get five. And we're still going to have five vacancies. Talking about even when it comes to off-duty officers, DPD, the back office, say, we don't have manpower, we're not going to be able to help you. We're not going to have to have all these ballgames here if we don't have security. And North Carolina Athletic Association, they don't even want us to be able to use some of those security folks as part of their requirements. So I heard the concern, but at the same time, our hands are a little bit tied because we don't have the manpower to do the work that needs to be done.
Ms. Byer, then Ms. Byer Daddas.
Yeah, I appreciate this being on here for discussion. I think it needs to be transparent to the community that this has been renewed. I still dream of a world where we have school without police officers in school. And so I think if there's anywhere in North Carolina that can do that, Durham can. And I look forward to ways that we can envision different ways forward. And, and I'm really looking forward to recommendations from the Community Safety Wellness Task Force. In the meantime, do we have, do we have documents, evidence of the training that is required? It talks about an annual SRO summit and ongoing guidance sessions. Do you all have kind of some kind of feedback about what's gone on with, with folks over the past year or two and what we should expect as they're actually training on restorative practices and things that have been put in place that didn't used to exist for a lot of them? And yeah.
Certainly, we'll be happy to gather the information as far as the training goes and provide it to the board of education. As for the annual summit, we actually have one scheduled for next Friday, August 19th, to be at Hillsdale High School. And it will involve all of our SROs as well as our secondary principals. And they'll have an opportunity to come together and to discuss the upcoming school year, make sure everyone is reacquainted with the MOU and that everyone is operating within their area of, excuse me, responsibilities.
And is that open to board members?
So I was, you know, I would say let's let the SROs and the principals get in there and do their work. It's not a public meeting. It is a, a meeting to fulfill what we said we was going to do in the MOU and to make sure that we're keeping our students and staff safe and in a manner that the public expects it to occur.
To piggyback from Dr. Monk, today we had a meeting with sheriff and other staff as well. So we have back-to-school town hall that is coming up. That's what we're going to have in two different areas. I think one is going to be Jordan, the other one is going to be Southern. So not only we're going to invite SROs, we're going to invite other folks that constitute a part of our, us, our school safety as well. I'm going to let Dr. Monk comment on that. So those dates are coming up. We're going to invite all our community members so that we'll tell them how we're going to keep our schools safe. That would be the opportunity for our board members to join as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mabanga. That's correct. And not, and we're not only inviting the board members, we're inviting families, the community, students to have that conversation with our, the sheriff will be there. We're inviting the police chief as well as Durham County Emergency Management. The fire marshal will be there. And then DPS staff will be there as well. You have an opportunity to ask some of the questions that maybe come out of the, the safety task force. And we also have a conversation about reunification. I mean, a lot of things are not involved with law enforcement. Sometimes we have to evacuate because of gas leaks, fires, things like that. This will be good information for families to know how that's carried out.
So you see that as a comprehensive conversation about safety, not just a response to potential shootings and are we prepared? But it's a broad.
That will be covered.
A broad Durham conversation or a presentation? How do you all?
So each one of those sectors will be able to provide about a 10-minute presentation about what they do and some of the emergencies that they respond to and how that responds, of course, what can be shared publicly. And then we're also have an opportunity for families to, to ask questions at the town hall. We also be streaming it virtually.
Thank you. I, I saw an article about some of the folks working in the detention centers actually not having, having had their training lapsed or not having it completed. And so I'd be interested to kind of make sure that anybody working in our schools in that capacity or with that equipment has the training that, that is required, but also looking for ways that we can employ different personnel in the future. I look forward to those kind of conversations. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think this is definitely one of those topics that there's, you know, the, what's written in the MOU and there's also the implementation. There's also the conversations, the accountability, and it's going to take. I'm grateful for the Safety and Wellness Task Force, but I think the conversations are also happening with impacted groups that may have yet to make those conversations known in different spaces. And so I do welcome this board being really receptive to the marginalized voices that talk about how it impacts them, who may not be able to join a meeting on a weekday, who may be working. And so this is, this is our job. Dr. Mabanga, I also appreciate, and also respect your work. I mean, this, these schools, we have so many schools, we added new schools. I mean, all the operations, the budget, the hiring, HR, the safety. Anybody who comes to our campuses needs to know that this is Durham Public Schools. And I actually wanted to bring a document. It's the rights, this is particular for a vulnerable population, the rights of immigrant children and English learners in the public school system. And this just talks about, you know, civil rights. And it talks about the fact that the Supreme Court, right, says that undocumented children and young adults have the same right to attend public primary and secondary schools as do U.S. citizens and permanent residents. Like other children, undocumented students are obliged under state law to attend school until they reach a mandated age. And it talks about that denying admission to a student, whether it's because of a license or anything, denying admission to a student during enrollment or at any time on the basis of their status. Everything is covered under this law. And so we need to treat students with decency. We need to treat students, we need to give them access to school. And I just want our schools to continue to be a safe place where any family can come. We have a growing population, we have enrollment going up in certain demographic groups. And this, the school system has already gone through the hurt of what happens when a student gets apprehended by law enforcement, even outside of our schools, at a bus stop, the case of wielding a Costa, and it was the same school at Riverside. And everybody galvanized to protect the student. And so as, as we continue to have this conversation about anybody who comes to our campus, they need to understand that our business and our priority is education of students. We are not here to do anything else to harm kids. We are here to support them in their learning. We're here to help them thrive. We're here to encourage them. We're here to see them graduate, see them walk across that hall. We're here to see the dreams of their families, their ancestors, the dreams of so many people realized through a public education that has been fought for. And there's a whole history in this country about education and the rights of education to every single student. And so I just want to share that it is not just an MOU. We need to make sure that there is a culture in Durham Public Schools of not harming students, of supporting their growth and knowing that they will learn the best behavior, decisions that they make from role models, from the way that we treat them with decency, with love, and with the best intentions. And so anybody who comes, not just SROs, volunteers, if you come to our schools, substitute teachers who are helping us, everybody who, you know, work comes from healthcare. This is a place of learning and a place where we value our kids, treat our kids with respect, with love, and, and we will be all the better for it. So thank you so much for the work that you do to oversee operations in Durham Public Schools. And thank you for your power, Dr. Mabanga. You make a difference. Your leadership makes a difference. Thank you.
Well noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byer Daddas. Any other comments? I just wanted to thank the administration for this transparency. The superintendent shared that he speaks with the chair and moves forward to sign the MOU, make sure it's in place before our year-round students come back into school. Looking at the documents, for those who may not have seen it, it has a list of the schools that the SROs are assigned to. They are our middle school and high school locations, not our elementary schools that I saw any. But thank you for the transparency. The document has been signed and then it's still open for us to have discussion and look forward to the recommendations coming out of the Safety and Wellness Task Force. I appreciate the work that the community members had done previously to get the updates that are currently in this MOU and back in 2019. One of the things that I do see, similar to Ms. Byer requesting the report of the nature of the training that's happening. And number five down here, and it also talks about the data collection that would happen. Article four, section five, data collection and reporting. And in that section, I would like to have, this is a yearly program review of data collection, notes, rates of suspension and outcomes of referrals. I know that we have rates of suspension, but I'm not seeing the outcomes of referrals for SROs. I would like to see that information, please. All that I had. Ms. Chavez, you have something?
I thank you for this. And I would only add to your request. And maybe this is obvious, but if, I would love to see that data as well, broken out by race and gender and other demographic information.
Any other comments? Here's, you're still there? All right. So moving on to the next agenda item, as that was just for discussion information, thank you, Ms. Giovanni, various purchasing and construction policy amendments.
You could please pull up the PowerPoint. Board members, as you're aware, you have an extensive policy manual. And as I want to say every time I come before you, it is a living, breathing entity. And periodically, staff members, board members, community members reach out to me and express a need or a desire for some amendments or edits to various policies. So over the course of maybe the last year, I received several requests from multiple staff members to work on or look at first the possibility of adjusting our purchase of several of our policies regarding what has to be brought before the board. So we started having meetings, Dr. Monk and Mr. LaSour and I met together. We discussed several of these items with Dr. Mabanga. We went back to the drawing board and worked on them. We then looked at, well, I guess I looked at, which took so long. I looked at almost probably all of the large districts around, districts that were similar in our size, districts that were maybe experiencing, you know, a lot of construction, et cetera. And based on that, it kind of came up with the input from Dr. Monk and Mr. LaSour. input from Dr. Monk and Mr. LaSueur to recommend that throughout, there's several different policies, but next slide, please, to request that the board consider increasing the amounts that have to be approved by the board from 90,000 to 300,000 for non-construction items. Obviously, the bidding statute is set at 90 in North Carolina. So anytime the, there is an item that requires a potential expenditure of over 90,000, we have to follow formal bidding processes. We do, Mr. LaSueur also oversees our informal bidding process as well. So we are very serious about our checks and balances and making sure that we are being good stewards and faithful stewards of the public money that is entrusted to Durham Public Schools. One of the amendments you'll see in Policy 6420 that we are proposing is that principals be given greater authority. As of right now, the current policy indicates that principals can purchase senior rings, caps and gowns, things along that, like DJs for parties, et cetera. And then they had $500 to spend. And I can tell you that that really did, did limit their ability. We looked at, again, looked at multiple different districts. Some of them were 5,000, some were 10,000, some were 20,000. And so based on, and Mr. LaSueur is obviously the expert, and any point, Mr. LaSueur, please feel free to assist me in this. But we did decide that we felt like 10,000 would allow our principals the flexibility to do what it is that they needed to do in their school system. I didn't include all of the policy language, but there is also, again, the checks and balances that they would have to, we would establish procedures to make sure that, that $10,000 was being appropriately spent. And Mr. LaSueur's Department, the Finance Department, would kind of lead that work. So that's Policy 6420. Next slide, please. The other recommendation in Policy 6430 that we are proposing to the board. Currently, we have a district purchasing officer. It is our recommendation to the board that that position be required to have, be a certified local government purchasing officer. And Mr. LaSueur, I am going to ask you to speak to some of the training that your staff has received, if you don't mind as well. But what that will do, that would be a certification that they have been trained at through the UNC School of Government to make sure that we are obeying the extremely complex myriad of laws regarding purchasing for public schools. And we are also requesting that, we're recommending that, and you include in your policy language, that everyone having to do purchasing also obtain this training as well for, for the good of the district as well. With regard to purchase, that was contracts. With regard to purchasing requirements for equipment and materials, we are again asking that the amount of authority be given from 90,000 to 300,000. Statutory bidding requirements again remain unchanged for these purchases. Next slide, please. This is for purchase of services. There is no bidding required by statute. However, we are, I believe the board adopted this policy maybe a year and a half ago or two years ago, and increased the amount to 150,000 for services. And I review, I don't know how many services contracts all the time and getting, considering inflation, I don't know what all the reasons are, but there's, there's a lot that we are having to bring and that is slowing us down from kind of entering into various contracts for services for our staff and students. So right now, what we're asking under the purchase of services is that it be increased to 300,000, as long as that amount remains in the allocated budget. Next slide, please. Policy 9030, facility construction, we're proposing that you add in change orders so that a lot of times our vendors can't find the change order requirements occasionally. So we are again proposing that the change order additive sums greater than up to 500,000 be that we staff have authority for that, as long as that funding is in the project budget as well. And this is only for construction contracts. Next slide, please. Bidding for construction work. Again, the request is that the amount that would need to be approved be increased from the 90,000 to the 500,000, as long as the funding is available. And that's in bidding for construction work. Next slide, please. And I do want to note that previously in the policies, Mr. LaSueur's office would provide the board with a, as the superintendent's designee would provide the board with quarterly reports on bids that were entered into that the board had not approved. It is also our proposal in the language, in the proposed policy language, that those reports go from quarterly to monthly so that, because the amount is increasing, so that the board is aware in a more expeditious manner of any contracts up until that, up to the 300,000 for non-construction and up to 500,000 for construction. And if there's anything that Dr. Monk or Mr. LaSueur would like to add prior to the board asking questions, feel free. Otherwise, all three of us are happy to answer all of your questions. Thank you.
This is on the agenda for a first reading. Any questions? Ms. Byer?
Thank you. I've been here a long time. And so I've seen other districts, not ours ever, have issues with, say, conflicts of interest, nepotism, contracts that didn't go before the board, let's say, other districts, other districts. So the amounts are what make me a little bit nervous. And I guess I'd like some reassurance from Mr. LaSueur or somebody that matches why we're going to 300 rather than 200. You know, these, you seem a little bit, I get, I'm, I'm okay with the 500 if that's in the scope of project. That one doesn't bother me, but the 300 seems large to me. And then I want us to make sure we have processes in place for conflicts of interest and code of ethics disclosures, both on this board and amongst any other, you know, folks that might need to do that. So those kind of nepotism-y kind of, there's new state statutes, I think I saw. Is that, anybody else see those that took place in 2022? So I want to make sure we're being clear about our conflicts. So those are some of my questions, concerns about these.
So just let me circle back. Chair Umstead has requested that I bring those new state statutes. So I am aware of it, and that will be brought to the board in September. I have talked to Chair Umstead about that, and I did not indicate it, but one of the things that, as I was preparing for this, I did note that we want to have, we will have increased training for staff on purchasing ethics, fiduciary duties and conflicts. So I completely agree with you, Mrs. Byer. And I apologize that I did not, you know, lift that up, but those are in my notes. I do think that that is extremely necessary. And I don't want to be the only person talking. I would like Mr. LaSueur to step in here. Because as we all know, he is, I mean, we're very much about checks and balances and making sure that none of us want to even give the appearance of any impropriety. We want to make sure we've got those checks. So, Mr. LaSueur.
Good evening. Good evening, board members. Good evening, board members. I've asked for this to come forward to expedite our purchasing processes. One of the things we have is if we have any type of delay, we're still having the same issues for supply chain issues that are going on. And every day that we delay, we get into a bigger bind. I have to take the responsibility and I have to certify that these funds are in place before we can do these purchase orders. So therefore, I want to make sure, I want you to be assured that we're going to continue transparency in that regard. We do the quarterly reports that show what vendors we pay. And from that standpoint, we're gonna, we're gonna move that up for these contracts that go over $90,000 that come. So that you will have the following month, you will get a listing of those contracts that we entered into. So if you have any questions at that point in time, we will certainly address them at that point in time. And we will make, give you the confidence that you, you, you need to have in us to move forward. But it's really, the supply chain thing is the biggest issue we're having. You know, and when we're doing something in June, we get your last board meeting and then something comes up at the beginning of July. We have to get it done. And so that's the reason why the supply chain has done damage to everybody. And we're just trying to be more consistent with school districts across the state of our size and larger to make sure that we get out in front of our purchasing on the front end.
That's super helpful. And you say with confidence, you're good with the amounts that are in here. These are the 300,000. That's
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Confident with that. Thank you. That helps me a great deal, and I really appreciate that. And I appreciate knowing that the ethics stuff and the new state statute stuff is coming next month. I'd also be interested, and I haven't looked in a while, to know whether we have whistleblower policy kind of in place. And so that if any of our employees see things that they're concerned about, that they want to alert us to, that we have protections and policy in place to make sure that we're yeah.
So one of the other points I want to point out is, as our federal programs, of course, that's a more restrictive type of process. And, and we want to ensure that those dollars are reasonable and allocable. We just had meetings with the state today in regards to our internal controls. And, and following up with that, I, I just want to make sure that you know that we look at our federal programs very closely with the program areas before we make those purchases as well. So.
Ms. Umstead, then Ms. Viadettis.
Might be a, just a clarifying question. You mentioned that statutorily $90,000 needs to come to the board. How, how are we able to kind of make this jump to the 300,000 or to the 500?
You made sure I understood. So there's a statute for formal bidding. There's a, that, and so I actually met with, and I was telling Mr. LaSueur about this, I actually met with the purchasing officer briefly today, kind of having some conversations around this. Just making sure that, and we're actually going to schedule a more formal meeting. She provided me with the flow chart that the finance office has, and so we're going to work on that because a lot of things, it is very complex, right? And so we want to make sure that everyone understands what the requirements are under the law and under board policy. So I'm a big infographic fan. Like, I don't know how to make them, but I hopefully, hopefully I can find someone. But she did have one. So kind of to answer your question, the 90,000 for the formal bidding remains unchanged. That's in the statute now. And speaking with Mr. Modesto around that, that's probably should be changed too, but you know, it's very, very difficult to change statutes. But I think a lot of folks are, and I, I don't know that it ever will change, but that is another check in balance, right? That you're having to go through to address Mrs. Byer's, you know, concern around any type of nepotism or conflicts or that something that someone nefarious, something nefarious that someone could be doing. We want to make sure that that's covered because none of us want to be on the front page of the paper or or worse.
They don't have papers anymore.
I'm showing my age again, like the, thank you, Paul.
Thank you so much for, for bringing this. I, I have, you know, a lot of appreciation for a lot of the work that is happening with LED lights in our, in our schools. This is something with, with, over the years. I know that you know, Watts, Glen, Easely, Riverside, you know, have gotten LEDs. There are other schools and in past presentations, we've talked about some of the schools that are still waiting. Some of those, I think Pearson Town is still waiting for, for, for that. So has this process also affected the lag time between these schools, the schools that have been in the plan? Is, is this something that, I'm, I'm just using one example, case in point, the LED lights, which we've been working on at this point, you know, this is one of the, not the, not the tendency of like sustainability, but it's just something. It's one thing, one factor. How, how has this process of like waiting for a board meeting and the 90,000, how has this impacted that project specifically?
Thank you for asking that question. There's many, whether it's supplies and materials or on the construction and repair side, projects that are above 90,000 but less than 500,000. And the statute for 500,000 for procurement, you know, how you bid something formally has been changed many, many years ago. And to give you an example, we had a boiler one time where the replacement was like $350,000. That may sound like a lot to a lot of people, but whenever you're cold in a classroom and it's time to, to get the heat on, you want that done immediately. And to have to wait to get enough board members, maybe to call a special meeting or to wait to another meeting before you can do something like that is prohibitive, especially now when there's many school districts that are clamoring for the exact same supplies, materials and equipment. And the manufacturer is going to give it to the, the individual who can produce the purchase order the fastest. And so as Paul said, this is going to give us more of a competitive advantage to doing a lot of those capital projects that you mentioned.
Is there any other comments, Ms. Chavez?
Thanks for this. I think it's always good to look at what other districts are doing and be more comparable to, to our fellow districts. I just wanted to raise up one of the points that you made, which is that principals would have more spending authority. And so I know you said the main impetus for this was to expedite purchasing. But I was wondering if part of this, part of the motivation was also to increase the agency and autonomy of our principals.
Go ahead, Mr. LaSueur. I'm joking.
So the raising of the limits to $10,000 really doesn't, it's on, I'll take it off. The raising of the limits to $10,000, school, schools really don't have a lot of things that, that are at that level. They may have a few. But if they're entering into a purchasing agreement for something of that magnitude, we're going to also put in procedures that require them to do a purchase order. I sign off on it like I, I do for all the other purchase orders to ensure that we know what's going on at the school level. So there are going to be some additional processes put in place to ensure that schools aren't going out and just spending a lot of money, but they don't, they don't have that much money to begin with. But anyway, there may be a, a one-time thing that they have. Because we might give them some money for capital that they need to do something with, and we want to make sure that they have that autonomy at that time. Because from time to time, we give them additional money for mowers and, and maintenance equipment that they need at the school level as well for their athletic fields and, and for their school building. So we just want to make sure that we're not handcuffing them at, at any point along the way.
Thank you. And, and just to say, my, my question was to not, I was thinking that that could be a positive thing for administrators to have more authority around spending.
And I would agree with you, Ms. Chavez. I know there are multiple times that principals reach out to Mr. LaSueur and I because they're trying to get, you know, enter into certain contracts and purchase orders for, for various things that are exceed that 500 and aren't included in that kind of limited list. So this will allow principals to do what needs to be done expeditiously with their schools and still with the things that Mr. LaSueur is going to put in place, have those checks and balances and in those aspects. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Giovanni, Mr. LaSueur, for your due diligence and seeing what's happening in other counties, going into our policies and giving the updates that's needed to get much-needed work done around our, our school and community. So thank you for your report. This is for a first reading.
Is this for a first reading that needs to be moved to our
The 25th, is it?
Yes, I would move that we put these policies for second reading on our August 25th agenda.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Umstead and second by Ms. Byer. Any discussion?
Just a quick comment for those who are watching us tonight. DPS has a budget over $500 million. So when we're talking about 500,000 or 300,000, first gotta keep in mind that we are pretty much half-billion organization. So that will help all those folks that are home.
May, Dr. Mabanga, may I get some clarification? Is that on for second reading or consent? And I just want to clarify what the board's pleasure is.
Be a consent agenda item, but it's the second reading on consent.
So it's been moved and properly seconded that the second reading be on a consent agenda item for August 25th. Seconded by Ms. Byer. Is there any other discussion? All right, we will do a voice vote. Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Viadettis?
Aye.
Ms. Byer?
Aye.
Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
Ms. Umstead?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
This is Matt Sears. I vote aye.
I also vote aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is academic services, Museum of Life and Science contract renewal. Dr. Hardy.
Thank you, Chair Lewis, members of the board, Dr. Rabinga, if we can pull up our presentation, please. You'll go forward one slide, please. Good evening, board members. Tonight, we are presenting this year's Museum of Life and Science contract. And this is before the board for approval and action. The Museum of Life and Science has a long partner success with Durham Public Schools. They have had the opportunity to bring authentic, hands-on science experiences to our students in innovative programming like Real Science, Field Trip Fridays during remote learning, and the Sparks After School Program at Brogdon. We are extremely excited about this year's components and the opportunity to bring science to life for our students and staff. I've invited Dr. Linda Tagorian, Coordinator of Math and Science, to outline the details of this contract with you. Dr. Tagorian.
Thank you, Dr. Hardy, for the opportunity to share this information with the board. I'm particularly excited about this year's contract with the museum, which expands programming for teachers and for all of our elementary students. Next slide. The first component of this contract establishes one day a week of science programming for all fifth graders at three of our smaller elementary schools. We piloted a similar program at C.C. Spalding this year with great success. The second component offers a STEM adventure for every fourth grade student in DPS. The museum has offered flexibility in both location at the school or at the museum and in selection of the program focus. The next component expands the Step Outside Teacher Mentoring Program to 25 additional elementary teachers. One of the most exciting things about this program is how it complements both the superintendent's focus on PLCs and the board's initiative to expand outdoor learning in all of our schools. This program was piloted last year at Fayetteville Street and Glen Elementary Schools and was enthusiastically received by both schools. The fourth component of this year's contract will bring an inflatable planetarium to each of our elementary schools for a full day of space exploration under the stars. This is an entirely new part of our program with the museum. The final component of our museum contract will continue professional development opportunities with the museum that are open to all DPS teachers. It will include three formal sessions and as well as the ongoing co-leadership of the Science Summit and the Science Alliance. Next slide. Next slide. This slide highlights data related to last year's museum partnership. I'd like in particular to point out the collaboration at C.C. Spalding, which we developed with the museum to bring science to life for fifth grade students. This program ran from January to May last year, helping to grow projected science proficiency from a projected 2.8% proficient at MOI testing to a projected proficiency of 19.4 based on the EOI test. Next slide, please. The photographs on the slide highlight some of the experiences of our students and teachers as a result of ongoing collaboration with the museum. As you can see, this partnership brings authentic science experience to students and teachers and is a vital part of science education in Durham Public Schools. With that, I turn it back to Dr. Hardy for questions.
Thank you so much. As a former high school science teacher, the partnership that we have with this resource right here in Durham is extraordinarily exciting. And most importantly, to ensure that, as you can see through these opportunities, there are opportunities for each and every child in our elementary school to experience science, to get to know science and to get excited about science. This is before the board tonight for action and approval. And at this time, Dr. Tagorian and I are open for any questions or discussion. Thank you.
Board, Ms. Chavez.
Well, thank you. We just so much enjoyed this presentation. A few days ago, when we are, we're very happy that this, you know, partnership continues to bring science alive, as you said, for so many kids. You know, we, we talked a little bit about how the Museum of Life and Science is such a great resource for our community. But we really want to make sure that those families who are not as well-resourced and can't necessarily access a a membership or one of the camps can still take advantage of this, of the programming through this wonderful partnership. So this is great and and we're happy to see it continue and and also to see the the data results for our students as well. Thank you.
Ms. Rogers.
Thank you so much. I want to express some gratitude in regards to showing the MOI and the end-of-year test scores improving. It really puts some backing behind the fact that project-based learning works. And I appreciate that we are increasing test scores and achievement in students without giving them test anxiety. Thank you so much for doing that.
Ms. Vayadethis.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tagorian, your service for so many years as a science champion and definitely all the team, right, all the, all the faces, all the, all the folks who have helped. It is an honor to see this. You know, we visited the Museum of Life and were able to hear about all the programs. And so this particular piece is ensuring access. And you're working with those three particular schools in math enrichment, hands-on. Can you tell us just a little bit more about how we got to the three? So I know you shared it with us in in the meeting that we had, but I just, you know, just a little bit more so that, you know, all the folks out there who who are seeing learning happening can understand like the impact of this and especially why these three schools are chosen.
So we, we have not selected the three schools yet. We are working with, together with the principal supervisor to identify those schools. I am very hopeful that we will be able to continue at C.C. Spalding where we began this year. But we will be working in cooperation with the principal supervisors to determine those three schools. They do need to be small elementary schools, just the nature of the partnership itself.
Yeah. And you mentioned schools that we have already worked with that were in the run, that could be in the run. So so at this point, that conversation is still happening from the last time that we met. You're still picking those schools and those schools are also included, the ones that have already received, you know, the the services in the past or have already been.
You're talking about Step Outside, the.
The other program.
Yes. Our intention is to include the teachers who participated from Glen and from Fayetteville Street in that program as well. Yes.
Thank you so much.
I'm so glad for this presentation and glad that there's flexibility, that the museum is also willing to bring some of their programs to our schools and then our schools also have the opportunity to visit. I I think that the museum has like Durham Days or some other programs where there's some discounted or discounted admission prices if you're not a member. And I would love if we could just highlight as they're going to these schools, that information for those families. Because we do know that membership fee can be a barrier for families. So how do we highlight some of those free opportunities that students and families can participate in the museum activities? And I, I don't think I'm wrong. I think they do have some Durham special days that are a free admission for Durham residents. So thank you all.
I am just as excited to hear this presentation for the second time as I was the first. I was just, I just, again, it warms my heart just to know that project-based learning is happening, that we are in partnership with the Museum of Life and Science coming into our schools, that professional development is occurring. And that's really important that we have this collaboration, that we make learning fun for our kids, taking away test anxiety and just really growing them, right? And again, I appreciate the transparency, you know, at the rate for the contract, did not have to come before the board, but I knew that it was important for us to hear more of the presentation. So everyone can hear the presentation and what good stuff it has, DPS has going on. You mentioned a science summit. Can you tell a little bit more about what that is?
And so we began a, a group called the Science Alliance, which is a group that brings together teachers and community partners. We meet quarterly and the Science Summit is one of those events. That one is hosted at the museum and we typically bring in a speaker from the local science community to talk about his or her research and then give teachers a chance to interact and network with other, with that scientist and with partners. It's really a spectacular event. So you're welcome to join us.
I will. Thank you so much. If there's nothing else, is there a motion on Ms. Byer?
No, I just chiming in with others to love your science touch, Tagorian. And we also had a chance to tour backstage, back at the museum. And there are great improvements coming. And there's also, they're on the bond in November along with DPS for voters to approve even more exciting changes. I love that the museum as a partner continues to evolve and and grow for our community. I do echo Ms. Umstead's concern about going ahead and sharing any information we have about community days, both on our social media, but even on a calendar, we send out to families so they know when those days are. And I think there's a reduced rate, something, no, something else. I think there is some, some type of membership that is available to some families in Durham that could help them access at other times too. So and are, is the museum doing our science kits or are we doing those in a different way?
No, our, our kits are, work through the Center for Inquiry-Based Learning, also here in Durham, another community partner that we, we have partnered with specifically for our kit production.
Yeah. You know, even though this is under a $90,000 contract, it's also important to just share exciting stuff that's going on. So I hope as we go forward with new policy changes, y'all will keep bringing the cool stuff so the community can know more about it and celebrate it with us. Thank you all.
Entertained a motion?
Move approval of the contract with the Museum of Life and Science?
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Vayadethis and second by Ms. Chavez. Any questions, discussion? I do a voice vote. Ms. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Vayadethis.
Aye.
Ms. Byer.
Aye.
Ms. Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Umstead.
Aye.
Mr. Sears.
This is Matt Sears. I vote aye.
And I also aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for being here this evening. And next item on the agenda is a summary of follow-ups.
So I will start and then Dr. Mark will make sure that I have not missed anything. In reference to the board-requested items, starting with community education, that we continue to think proactively for the upcoming 2023, 2024 school year and staffing, that we share registration regarding, this is in reference to the COVID portion of that, share information regarding registration for families to participate in diagnostic testing, that we make sure that we update the board regarding our progress regarding ventilation, continue to share information regarding test kits availability and sharing those test kits with families as they are available from the health department, and provide information regarding pediatric vaccination rates. Share information regarding, to remind families about vaccination in terms of vaccination messaging. Regards to the SRO item that we provide information regarding the substitutions that may be used from the sheriff department, training provided to our SROs, as well as the outcome regarding the referrals, if possible, to include race and gender information. And in regards to the museum item that we share with our families and communities, community members, any of the dates that may be reduced rates, free Durham days or membership to our families.
There was one thing that Ms. Byer did request some additional information on a whistleblower policy. So I did note that.
Thank you, Ms. Giovanni. Great team. Yes. That's the end of our summary of follow-ups. The next item is our closed session. So we're now going to close session.
I move that we go into closed session for the items stated on the agenda.
Second, the move by Ms. Umstead, second by Ms. Byer to go into closed session discussion. Ms. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Vayadethis. Ms. Byer.
Aye.
Ms. Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Umstead.
Aye.
Matt Sears.
This is Matt Sears. I vote aye.
I also vote aye. Passing unanimously going to closed session. Thank you. Thank you.
We are now back in open session. Dr. Mobinga.
Madam Chair, I'm here to seek for your approval for the personnel report as discussed at a closed session.
Move approval of the personnel report as amended dated August 11th, '22.
Second. The move by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? Mr. Sears is not with us in this open session, so we'll do a group vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please use the same sign. Passes unanimously. And with that, we adjourn.